Township Council Meeting, Monday, September 23rd is now called to order. Would the County, say County Commander Swank lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice, the adequate notice, because this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 104-8 and NJSA 104-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on Fulton Board as issued to Little Falls City, January 2nd, 2019. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Carroll D. News on record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the mail to the Township's clerk on said date.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ford-Mayer, Councilmember Quadi,
Present.
Councilmember Bencherry,
Present.
Have a motion to approve the minutes of meeting August 26th and the meeting of September 9th. Can I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Quadi,
Yes.
Councilmember Bencherry,
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Quadi?
Thank you, Council President. On September 14th, as I have mentioned here several times, we helped our fall cleanup. It was a great success. We had some members who are here tonight with us, and I appreciate their participation. As I knew everybody who came, walked their state, sent 20 volunteers as part of their 9/11 day of service down. They came in a bus, and they were a terrific help to us. And so, sorry, they sent 14 volunteers. We cleaned up 20 bags of litter, which is a good thing and a bad thing, because it's good that we got 20 guys of litter off of our streets, and it's quite a shame that we had to take 20 bags of litter off of our streets. And so, I want to implore the residents of Little Falls and anybody who comes through here to please stop littering our streets. We do have a $250 fine for littering now, at Little Falls' house earlier this year. But I want to thank and congratulate the people who participate on their service to our township, because I appreciate it very much. Yesterday, we attended the Little Falls Business Fall Festival, and thank you for your job. Now, the Morse Canal, another event for our residents and outsiders to come and appreciate Little Falls, and that was quite a success as well. So, it's been a good couple of weeks since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quadi. Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you. Guesson, Fall Festival yesterday was great, so if anybody did enjoy that or missed it this year, you should definitely attend next year. We do have the Run Little Falls still progressing towards our October 6th date, with great success in our sponsors. Since the past, we've had Lakeland Bank sign in as a sponsor, as well as PBE Education Foundation, and Black Work Tattoo. So, again, anybody who is interested in number one, signing up; two, volunteering; or three, becoming a sponsor, you can please reach out. All the information is on either runsignup.com, or also you can find out information through our Facebook page if you Google Run Little Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bencherry?
Thanks, Council President. First, I just want to thank everyone that came out for our September 11th ceremony two weeks ago. It was a nice event to honor those that we lost on September 11th, and just a big thanks again to the BW Department, the Little Falls Fire Department, the Police Department as well for all their support making that event happen. Couple other updates. Over this past weekend, some members of the council and the mayor had a chance to spend some time with the Little Falls Girl Scouts over on Lewis Street. Recently, the Girl Scouts had come to us looking for a home for their Gaga Pit, which is a game that the girls play. It's sort of like a modified, safer type of dodgeball, just using your hands without throwing the ball physically, have people like patting it. So, with the help of the Girl Scouts and their parents, they actually built the Gaga Pit this Saturday on Lewis Street, and some of us were actually there to help with them. And then after a while, Councilman Quadi and I jumped into Gaga Pit, and the kids quickly eliminated us as quick as they possibly could by throwing the ball right at us. And of course, two of us are like, two funny guys, didn't know what they were doing. But anyway, I just wanted to say, great job to the girls and their parents. This was something that they worked on to earn a badge, and they're looking forward to having some games at the park, and it's open to everyone. And what they did as well was, they have their rules sheet right next to the pit, just have to bring your own ball, of course, but it's a fun way for the community, have the girls get together and just grow at the park, just playing some fun activities. So, I just wanted to mention that. Couple other things too, just on the speed radars that are going around town. They are moving this week to Van Helle, as well as Brower Town Road. They've been over on Van Ness recently, and Lincoln. And I know some people have been asking, well, how come it just says have a nice day, or school's back, drive safe? Well, it is capturing the data via speed, it's just easier not showing the data, so that it's actually real time, because a lot of times when you see the data, you see you're doing 20, or 25, or even 30, you're going to slow down or speed up, so this way you get the real time data as cars drive by. So, we have two more weeks of the two radars out there, and we're going to collaborate all the data through the shared recording. The other thing I did last week as well was, I met with our new engineer, so Lamentowitz, just to talk about some speed hump research that he's working on, gathered some information, and looking at a few streets in town to try to give his perspective on if we do move ahead with this potentially, what it would look like, where it would go, and that sort of thing. So, in the coming weeks, him and I are going to be sitting down more to go over some things. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Bencherry. As the audience knows, I've talked about the sign, commercial sign ordinance a few times before. I think we're getting very close. Of course, I think every time I say that, another idea comes up. But last week, I met with Mr. Kusia and Jeff Denoda, our planner. I think this time we're very close to introducing it this year. It's going to really transform the town in the years to come, so we're looking forward to introduce that ordinance soon. Mayor, under your report, if you would talk about the Charge Point Grant, and the construction report, and also about the delinquent taxes on how we govern with our budget with that matter. At this time, we're going to have to step a little bit out of order. Oh, Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor DeMann? Not that much of an order. Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right, so first things first, as far as the construction fees. This year, there is a lot of construction that is happening down. There's a number of big projects that are ongoing. A number of these projects are projects that were approved really over a decade ago, and then because of the downturn in the market, they were recently brought back before playing board, just to find out their approvals. Things such as the 24 townhomes on East Lansing, such as the Happy Properties, a number of the big projects ongoing down. And our construction fees this year are up due to all of these projects, which is good news for us. These are fees that can be utilized to offset some costs, but unfortunately, as everybody knows, there's other costs that continue to go up, so we'll have to continue to work on balancing the budget year after year. We do have substantial construction fees that the township has collected this year, I think to over a quarter million dollars worth. So, that's it. As far as the charging ports, the township was requesting and receiving grants for charging ports for electric cars. We are going to be receiving a couple of charging ports that we are going to locate down in Morris Canal Park and Lot, the township now owns. And we're going to designate just a couple of spots for these electric vehicles. The township will be currently funding the charge for these electric vehicles. The cost is nominal, that should be charged, but it is something that we are looking to install down there in the near future. There's going to be some engineering work involved, connecting electricity and things like that, but we are going to be moving forward with these charging ports in the near future. Next, Council President, as we report on the delinquent taxes and how township calculates for all of that. And this is something that we do receive questions on occasionally, and just to help clarify, taxes that the township receives or does not receive are anticipated on a year-to-year, month-to-month basis. It's assumed that there will be a percentage of the taxes that are owed to the municipality that we do not receive in real time, in time in which we should be paying on each quarter, for a number of reasons, whether it's the housing foreclosure, whether it's just keeping on paying the taxes, whether it's paying the taxes, different things, and there are reasons sometimes that taxes don't pay. But the township does calculate for that, and we do include that in our annual budget. As far as paying the schools, you know, the township is responsible for collecting the local taxes, which makes up about a quarter of our total control of taxes that we're getting.
Will the county, Passaic County Commander Swank lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice, the adequate notice, that this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 1044-8 and NJSA 1044-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on Fulton Board as issued to Little Falls, January 2nd, 2019. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Carroll D News on record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice is filed in the township's clerk on said date.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Ford, Mayor, Councilmember Quadi.
Present.
Councilmember Seaver.
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Present.
Present. Have a motion to approve the minutes of meeting August 26 and the meeting of September 9.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, please call the roll.
Councilmember Quadi.
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver.
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery.
Yes.
Councilwoman Quadi.
Thank you, Council President. On September 14, as I have mentioned here several times, we helped our fall cleanup. It was a great success. We had some members who are here tonight with us, and I appreciate their participation. As I knew, everybody who came, Montclair State, sent 20 volunteers as part of their 9/11 day of service down. They came in a bus, and they were terrific help to us. And so, sorry, they sent 14 volunteers. We cleaned up 20 bags of litter, which is a good thing and a bad thing, because it's good that we got 20 bags of litter off of our streets, and it's quite a shame that we had to take 20 bags of litter off of our streets. And so, I want to implore the residents of Little Falls and anybody who comes through here to please stop littering our streets. We do have a $250 fine for littering now at the little office earlier this year. But I want to thank and congratulate the people who participate on their service to our township, because I appreciate it very much. Yesterday, we attended the Little Falls Business Fall Festival, and thank you for your job. Now, the Morse Canal, another event for our residents and outsiders to come and appreciate Little Falls, and that was quite a success as well. So, it's been a good couple of weeks since our last meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Quadi. Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you. Guess, the Fall Festival yesterday was great, so if anybody did enjoy that or missed it this year, you should definitely attend next year. We do have the Run Little Falls still progressing towards our October 6 date with great success in our signups and our sponsors. We are, since the past, we've had Leyland Bank sign in as a sponsor, as well as PB Education Foundation and Black Work Tattoo. So, again, anybody who is interested in, number one, signing up, two, volunteering, or three, becoming a sponsor, you can please reach out. All the information is on either runsignup.com, or also you can find out information through our Facebook page if you Google Run Little Falls. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vanchery?
Thanks, Council President. First, I just want to thank everyone that came out for our September 11 ceremony two weeks ago. It was a nice event to honor those that we lost on September 11. And just a big thanks again to the P W Department, the Little Falls Fire Department, the Police Department as well for all their support making that event happen. Couple other updates. Over this past weekend, some members of the council and the mayor had a chance to spend some time with the Little Falls Girl Scouts over on Lewis Street. Recently, the Girl Scouts had come to us looking for a home for their Gaga Pit, which is a game that the girls play. It's sort of like a modified, safer type of dodgeball, just using your hands without throwing the ball physically. I have people like patting it. So, with the help of the Girl Scouts and their parents, they actually built the Gaga Pit this Saturday at Lewis Street, and some of us were actually there to help with them. And then after a while, Councilman Quadi and I jumped into Gaga Pit, and the kids quickly eliminated us as quick as they possibly could by throwing the ball right at us. And of course, two of us are like, two funny guys, didn't know what they were doing. But anyway, I just wanted to say, great job to the girls and their parents. This was something that they worked on to earn a badge, and they're looking forward to having some games at the park, and it's open to everyone. And what they did as well was, they have their rules sheet right next to the pit. You just have to bring your own ball, of course, but it's a fun way for the community and how the girls get together and just grow at the park, just playing some fun activities. So, I just wanted to mention that. Couple other things, too, just on the speed radars that are going around town. They are moving this week to Van Hell, as well as Brower Town Road. They've been over on Van Ness recently and Lincoln. And I know some people have been asking, well, how come it just says have a nice day or school's back, drive safe? Well, it is capturing the data via speed. It's just easier not showing the data, so that it's actually real time, because a lot of times when you see the data, you see you're doing 20, or 25, or even 30, you're going to slow down or speed up. So, this way, you get the real time data as cars drive by. So, we have two more weeks of the two radars out there, and we're going to collaborate all the data through the shared recording. The other thing I did last week as well was, I met with our new engineer, Silo Menowitz, just to talk about some speed hump research that he's working on, gathered some information, and looking at a few streets in town to try to give his perspective on if we do move ahead with this potentially, what it would look like, where it would go, and that sort of thing. So, in the coming weeks, I'm going to be sitting down more to go over some things. That's it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Vanchery. As the audience knows, I've talked about the sign, commercial sign ordinance a few times before. I think we're getting very close. Of course, I think every time I say that, another idea comes up. But last week, I met with Mr. Kusia and Jeff Denoda, our planner. I think this time, we're very close to introducing it this year. It's going to really transform the town in the years to come. So, we're looking forward to introduce that ordinance soon. Mayor, under your report, if you would talk about the Charge Point Grant and the construction report, and also about the delinquent taxes on how we govern with our budget with that matter. At this time, we're going to have to step a little bit out of order. Mayor, I'm sorry. Mayor DeMann?
Thank you.
Not that much of an order.
I'll be back.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right. So, first things first, as far as the construction fees, this year, there is a lot of construction that is happening in town. There's a number of big projects that are ongoing. A number of these projects are projects that were approved really over a decade ago, and then because of the downturn in the market, they were recently brought back before playing board, just to find out their approvals. Things such as the 24 townhomes on East Lansing, such as the happy properties, a number of the big projects ongoing in town. And our construction fees this year are up due to all of these projects, which is good news for us. These are fees that can be utilized to offset some costs, but unfortunately, as everybody knows, there's other costs that continue to go up, so we'll have to continue to work on balancing the budget year after year. We do have substantial construction fees that the township has collected this year and include over a quarter million dollars worth. So, that's it. As far as the charging ports, the township was requesting and received grants for charging ports for electric cars. We are going to receive a couple of charging ports that we are going to locate down in Morris Canal parking lot that the township now owns, and we're going to designate just a couple of spots for these electric vehicles. The township will be currently funding the charge for these electric vehicles. The cost is nominal that should be charged, but it is something that we are looking to install down there in the near future. There's going to be some engineering work involved, connecting electricity and things like that, but we are going to be moving forward with these charging ports in the near future. Next, Council President, we have a report on the delinquent taxes and how township calculates for all of that. This is something that we do receive questions on occasionally, and just to help clarify, taxes that the township receives or does not receive are anticipated on a year-to-year, month-to-month basis. It's assumed that there will be a percentage of the taxes that are owed to the municipality that we do not receive in real time, in time in which we should be paying on each quarter for a number of reasons, whether it's the housing foreclosure, whether it's just keeping on paying the taxes, whether it's paying the taxes, different things. And there are reasons sometimes that my taxes don't pay, but the township does calculate for that, and we do include that in our annual budget. As far as paying the schools, you know, the township is responsible for collecting the local taxes, which accounts for about a quarter of our total control of taxes that we generate. But in addition to that, there are county taxes that the municipality collects, there are regional school tax, local school tax, and library taxes that the municipality collects for all of those. And we are required to make our distributions to the county and to the schools and the library according to our payment schedules with them, but unfortunately, the municipality sometimes doesn't collect, again, all the taxes. So, that is something that is calculated and anticipated each year in the calculated budget. So, that is something that, again, questions have been asked, and I just want to make sure that we can clear up the explanation there. The last thing that I would like to address is the county. It feels that there is not enough construction that has been taking place on our county roads, and they are going to be installing something called scour accounting measures on the bridge over the Pettingill River at East Main Street. And essentially, they are going to be shutting up the bridge from underneath. There will be one lane closed over the bridge while the work is ongoing. The traffic will be alternating. They are not starting work out until 9:00 AM after school is in session, so we are making sure that St. Valley is able to have a mad dash of kids for the 8:04 start time, and then the work will begin at 9:00 AM, and hopefully, the morning rush hour will be at least somewhat down by that point. So, when that work is going to be occurring, I don't know the specific dates yet. Is that starting?
They started today.
They started today?
But they're in.
Okay, so the road is not closed yet. When the road is going to be closed, we'll be providing an update. Then it'll be alternating traffic in both directions, so the road will not be closed, but we will have some more construction that will affect one of our county roads in East Main Street.
Mr. Fernandez?
And I, they indicated that the work would be going on Monday to Friday. I'm not certain of the duration of the work.
It's maybe two weeks.
Yeah, there's unknown timeframe, but they're, they're going to be working Monday to Friday. There will be no work happening on weekends.
Does the council members have any questions or comments for the mayor concerning his report?
I just have a quick question.
Councilmember Vanchery?
I know you said nine in start time. Do they also factor in school, too, because drop off starts at 8:45, but some parents arrive at nine, maybe a few minutes after, so there may be a little flexibility if you say 9:15, just because, you know, you get the double win, and you got PB, then you got school, too.
So, the contract has already been issued. The work has already started. They start at nine because of St. Valley, I understand, and school, too, has a little bit of a later start time. Usually, the traffic on Main Street by nine o'clock has somewhat died down, at least the East Main Street side of town. But again, the contract is already broken on that. We're only being aware of the project, the company, so.
At this time, council, council, do you have anything for this government body?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Have a motion to open the meeting to the public for agenda items only.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. Please give your name and address of the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, it may be granted additional time, and the sole discretion of the council president.
This is the first time in two years. We're going to make a great exception. Councilman, Commander Swank has to go to another event, so sir, if you'd like to take the floor, you can.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Swank. I am the Passaic County Commander for the American Legion. The American Legion is now celebrating its 100-year anniversary as the world's largest veteran-run organization. Passaic County will be celebrating its 100th year next year in 2020. As Passaic County Commander, my goal is to bring Passaic County American Legion back to one of the leading counties in New Jersey and doubling our American Legion membership. I would like to see every veteran, young and old, become part of our great organization, making it a powerful, positive community force in doing good, as well as providing support network for our fellow veterans. It is with great honor that I would like to inform you, as well as the public, about some recent changes pertaining to membership. Any veteran who served between December 7, 1941, to present date is now eligible to join the American Legion. The Legion fought long and hard to have this changed, and it has now been done. Any veteran who has served a minimum of one day active duty may now become a member of the American Legion, with exception of those dishonorably discharged. The American Legion not only helps its veterans with many programs, but we also help our community, state, and nation as well. Many posts throughout the county are involved in community fundraising efforts, with all money raised staying in New Jersey. Post 174 Wayne of Passaic County will be hosting a program focused on PTSD and how it affects not only the veterans, but all those that suffer from PTSD. Currently, 22 veterans a day are losing their lives to suicide. The American Legion has also partnered with CODA, Children's Organ Transplant Association, who provide monetary assistance to families that are displaced by the organ transplant process for their child. Donations are always appreciated. We, the state of New Jersey, American Legion, have placed first in the past two years in raising funds for CODA. Every year, the American Legion raises thousands of dollars for various causes, including and not limited to cancer, juvenile diabetes, autism, and homeless veterans, just to mention a few. Next year, 174 will be planning to help three different families, one with type 1 juvenile diabetes, another with cerebral palsy, who is the daughter of a decorated Port Authority police officer. This officer is responsible for saving many lives a few years ago when the subway bomber tried to assassinate many American citizens. He was the one who personally tackled this person and stopped him from having the rest of his explosives go off. Last but not least, we will be helping the family of a first responder from Passaic County who has not yet been determined. I would like to mention just a few of the many programs the American Legion supports. They are baseball, Boys State and Girls State. Every year, the American Legion sends hundreds of young men and women to camp to learn about politics and life. The Girls State is run by the Ladies Auxiliary. The coloring contests, primarily for grade school students. Oratorical contests. Since 1938, the contest has developed knowledge and appreciation for the U.S. Constitution among high school students. The American Legion has awarded thousands of dollars in scholarships to the winner. Scouting, and lastly, youth cadet law enforcement programs. These are just a few of the many programs that the American Legion sponsors. The American Legion is made up of volunteers who care about the veterans, their state, their nation, and their communities. Not one of us receives any monies for what we do, from our national commander on down to all of the different posts. We are all volunteers. We are veterans still serving. Alongside our legionnaires, we also have the Sons of the American Legion, who are exactly that. They are the sons of those parents, grandparents, and great-grandparents that served, as well as the Ladies Auxiliary, that are the daughters, the wives, the mothers, and the grandchildren of the veterans who serve. By becoming a member of the Sons or the Auxiliary, you can honor your parent or your grandparent. If anyone has any questions, please visit your nearest American Legion post. We are all here to assist you as best we can. With me today, fortunately for you here in Little Falls, you have two American Legion posts. With me today are some of the officers of our American Legion posts. You have Vinnie from 108. You have Vinnie from 121. Those are both commanders, and you have Jason, the adjutant of 121, as well. I would like to thank the council for giving me this opportunity to come here and explain who and what we, the American Legion, are about. Please come out and support what we do. Check any, you can get all this information of what we do and the many, many programs that we have at legion.org. God bless all our troops in harm's way. God bless all our first responders, and most of all, God bless America. For God and country, thank you for this time.
You're welcome. Does the council have any questions or comments? Mayor?
Just if there's any information that you would like to send in about the American Legion, so that, let us know.
Sure. Thank you.
The.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The floor is open for public comment for agenda items.
Good evening. Andrew Baggett, 78, Franklin Road, Denville. My Little Falls concern is 105 and 107 Main Street between Center and Stevens. Just thank the commander there and all the veterans there. Just regarding these two ordinances, 169, as it's written there, to me, the most important thing is the Little Woods Road in parentheses. It really explains the whole, for somebody coming in trying to catch up on it that doesn't know, compared to the second one, ordinance 1370, where it just says fees. And I believe that's about councilwoman's, if we could have just put down on the bottom there parentheses, 5K run or something, and in the future on all of them, it would really catch somebody up to speed on it that's maybe been out of town or something like that. That would be really helpful, just that little bit on the bottom there would be a plus.
Thank you for bringing that forward to us.
Okay. Thank you.
The floor is open for agenda items. Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion to close to the public comment.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President's going.
Yes, I just want to comment that there's 16 raffles going on in our community. Was it, did I, 16, right?
I never seem to win.
No. Okay, we don't need, comments are addressed to the chair, you know? It's not, it's not the chair's fault that certain members don't win, you know, so. Mrs. Kraus, read ordinance 1369, please.
Second meeting of public hearing of ordinance number 1369, ordinance of the township council of the township of Little Falls in the county of Passaic, New Jersey, admitting the township code to regulate the parking restrictions on certain streets, Woods Road.
Have a motion to open to public hearing on ordinance 1369.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The floor is open concerning 1369.
Andrew Baggett again, 78 Franklin Road.
For the future, you don't have to repeat your address if you come up again. Okay.
Were the residents notified?
I would, do the residents have to be notified on that for 1369? Mayor?
I mean, there's no specific mailing to residents in the area. The reason that this ordinance was actually, that I brought this ordinance to the township intention is because about a dozen of homes that are constructed up on Woods Road have approached me, they invited me up there one day for a meeting with them. I met a lot of them right on Woods Road, and they indicated to me that when school is in session, particularly with Mount Forest University, that as they park on one side of the bend, where there's currently already no parking permitted on one of these sides, and the reason I prefer that is because the bend can turn, so the sides change, but the directions change. But they, I met about a dozen of them out there from a dozen different homes. They indicated to me that when the, when there is parking on one side of the road in that particular area, that it becomes very dangerous around the bend when vehicles are approaching. And that's the reason that I brought this ordinance to the township's intention.
But they weren't notified, though, publicly or with?
Everybody's notified by way of this being posted, but aside from that, no.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion to close to the public hearing on ordinance 1369.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to adopt ordinance 1369.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Kraus, call the roll for 1369.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President's going.
Yes. Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1370.
Second meeting of public hearing of ordinance number 1370, and ordinance entitled ordinance of the township council of the township of Little Falls in the county of Passaic, New Jersey, admitting the township code chapter 71 fees.
Have a motion to open to the public hearing for, on ordinance 1370.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify, God bless you, signify by saying nay. Motion carries. The floor is open for 1370. Seeing no one come forward, I'm sorry, Mr. Fernandez. Go ahead, sir. This is for 1370.
Yes. Louis Fernandez, 54, Harrison Street.
Good evening.
Let me, let me, good evening. Let me emphasize, this is just for the 5K run, correct?
Correct.
Only for that?
Only for that.
All right. When you say fees, when you make it plural.
What was the concern there?
I just said, but I was falling asleep.
Okay, thank you. Will we see you running, Mr. Fernandez?
Only if I get a discount on the taxes.
I think we can start a poll, excuse me.
Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion to close to the public hearing on ordinance 1370.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Have a motion to adopt ordinance 1370.
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on 1370.
Councilmember Quadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President's going.
Yes. Have a motion to open to public comment for general matters only.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Mrs. Kraus?
Anyone wishing to address the township council may do so through the council president. Please give your name and address of the record. Comments are to be limited to three minutes. However appropriate, it may be granted additional time, and the sole discretion of the council president.
The floor is open.
Andrew Baggett. I want to thank Councilman Quadi for the litter, Crashbusters Day. It was, who would think that three hours walking around town would be fun? But I want to thank my wife, she did a wonderful job that day. I'd like to thank the three high school students. Joseph J., I didn't get his last name, but I just got his initial, and he was president of the Environmental Club over at PB. He's a junior, and did a great job. And there was a brother and sister team. Isabel and Jaden Z. was their last initial. And Isabel is a freshman over at PB, and Jaden is a freshman over at Clifton High School. They did a great job and was kind of rewarding, not only to get something accomplished, but to meet these three young kids coming up in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Quadi?
Yeah. So, in reference to what you're talking about, the three high school students, I want to stress that we should let people know, we put it on the flyers and things, that people should not be dropping off children to this event, but Mr. Baggett was gracious enough to take the three students with him, because we don't like to have unsupervised children on busy streets cleaning up litter. And so, the reason why Mr. Baggett knows their names is because he spent three hours with them. But it's not an ideal situation for us to be sending high school students out with adults
of public service, so that there's a sense of family participation as well as their safety being insured. So, but thank you for your time.
There was a picture somewhere of the Montclair people on the bus and everything else. It would have been nice if we could have got a picture of some of the Little Falls residents. There was a couple of nice families there. There was a family of four that I know they were heading out down to Singac, and then when we came back in to get the pizza, I saw a couple other father-son teams come in and everything else.
There were some fathers, some, some parents of children as well.
Good job for all the Little Falls residents, thank you.
The floor is open.
Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison Street. The first question, Mr. Wenzel, is for you.
It's to the chair. It's to, it's to the chair. I'm sorry.
But I'll listen. Mr. Council President.
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Fernandez. Ask the question.
The question is, do you have anything for me regarding 53 Harrison Street?
Okay, it's my understanding that once again, as we talked about in the past, this is a matter that was handled in the municipal court. It's my understanding that the matter's been adjudicated, meaning it's resolved, to the extent that there was a monetary penalty assessed. There were also conditions placed with regard to the removal of part of what is in that violating area, and there is a, at least a 15-day timeframe for compliance, which I believe Mr. Dean Maria, our construction code official, will be on top of whether he wants to be or not. I will. I was informed of this myself today, so that at this point is the resolution of the matter in the municipal court. But I would say this, I know you're continuing concern about this property, and obviously there's a requirement by this individual, the property owner, to move, not only to pay the fine, but also to remove the offending use in the building. So there is further review that has to be done, that compliance to be done. If the person doesn't comply, then further action will be, will necessarily have to be taken for the failure to comply, because the person indicated, to my understanding in municipal court and open court, that he would comply.
Okay. I, I did call today, I placed quite a few calls to the court, to a few places near in these, at City Hall, and I was sort of given the title. The only thing that they can tell me is that, yeah, he pleaded guilty, and he was fined, and are you ready for this, the amount of $289, which I consider myself a joke. This is an insult. Anybody with a little bit of, a little bit of intelligence will consider this an insult.
Mr. Fernandez, you are insulting our judge, you know, by saying that comment, right?
But.
I'm just saying, by the comment you just went on record, you're insulting, sir, let me just finish.
Okay.
But that comment you just made.
I was talking, not you.
No, 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 but the comment you made, you are insulting our municipal judge by that comment, by saying he has no doubt. Go ahead.
Okay. On, or about, and I'm going to explain the facts, and then you'll make your own decision. On 11/8/2013, this gentleman bought a two-family home. Right after that, he evicted the two tenants and started rebuilding the house. A few months later, he made it a three-family home. So, let's say from 11/14 until 11/19, for five years, he's been collecting rent. He's been using the township resources, meaning garbage, ambulance, all these rights, all these things, without paying a dime. His taxes didn't go up, he didn't get a permit for that, so he's cheating not only the township, but the rest of the residents as well. Now you tell me, in today's market, and, I understand you're a pro in real estate, Mr. Damiano?
Mayor, Mayor Damiano.
Mayor Damiano, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I hope I didn't offend you like I did. Mayor Damiano, you tell me in today's market, if you collect rent for five years, and you get penalized $289, is that an insult?
For the economic and real estate, what's wrong?
Okay.
Mr. Fernandez, I understand your mathematical means to how the, and I understand, let me just finish, I understand where you're going, the rent, the rental income came in, revenue less the penalty, you fit the economic penalty. You know, we have a prosecutor that argues on behalf of the government. However, at the end of the day, it is the judge that makes the decision. And the judge made a decision here, whether I'm in favor of it, you're in favor of it, doesn't matter, that's the judge's decision. Maybe the judge looked at it as a first offense, and this is what he came up with. I don't know, first offense, I came to the court. I don't know what was in the judge's mind to make that decision. However, Mr. Franzito, the judge, honorable judge, made that decision, and now that's where we stand.
Okay. The, to me, like I said, is, I will ask the county, the state, or the fed for any investigation, because I do feel that there is a cover-up.
God bless you.
God bless you. I do feel there is a cover-up by the elected officials and somebody.
Mr. Fernandez, now, now you use the word "cover-up." Now, listen, sir, there's no cover-up. Let me say, the case went in front of the courts, and this is what the judge ruled. End of story. Whether I like to find, the mayor likes to find, or any of these governing bodies like to find, that's what the judge ruled.
Mr. President.
Now, do not say it as a cover-up, because I'm going to take that burden.
I really, I really, at this point, it makes.
Well, then I'm going to ask you to sit down.
Why is that?
Because there's no cover-up going on.
I'm entitled to express my opinion.
No, no, you're, you're, you're insulting me by saying there's a cover-up. You know what you're saying?
I'm saying.
Do you know what's coming out of my mouth at this point?
All I'm saying, all I'm saying is, after five years, this matter should have been, should have been solved.
Okay, I can understand that, sir.
And after five years of collecting thousands of dollars in rent, not paying federal taxes, taking advantage of the city, you tell me who's at fault? Is he at fault? No, the only fault that he committed, this gentleman, is that he got caught. And the council, the elected officials, didn't move fast enough to avert the situation.
Yes.
And they should have done it, and they didn't do it.
I concur, Mr. Fernandez, I concur that the governing bodies should have moved maybe on a quicker matter.
Now, you tell me.
However, there's no, there's no cover-up.
The county, the fed, the state, or the feds, because this is not the end.
Mr. Fernandez, you're welcome to go to wherever you feel durable, but the word "cover-up," there's no cover-up.
That's your opinion.
No, it is a fact.
Well, like I said, it's your opinion.
No, it's a fact.
When you ask everybody else, in this case, it comes to the fact, the fact, to me, is very simple. Crime pays, especially when you are connected to some politicians. Crime does pay. You tell me that $289 is, pretty soon, why does he ask for a rebate? Pretty soon, he'll be entitled to a rebate on the bathroom that he himself, nobody forced that gentleman to make an illegal bathroom there. And the fact that he pleaded guilty, I mean, he says it all.
Yes.
For five years, he got away with murder. And the justice, go ahead, my son, keep going. You did a great job. $289. Mr. Quadi just said, the minimum for littering is $250. Does he pay to cheat financially, the township, the feds, you know, the IRS and whatever? Obviously, he does. Obviously, he does. So, I don't know who, because I have copies of emails that I have sent Mr. Major, Mr. Damiano, going back two and a half years ago, and he keeps telling me that, no, the county officials, the township officials are looking into it and all that. Obviously, they weren't looking good enough because the gentleman pleaded guilty. So, it's the same situation two and a half years ago as it is now, and he pleaded guilty. So you're saying that there's no cover-up? That will be, that will be, that remains to be seen, to be honest with you.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Floor is open.
Raymond Kostrowski, 179 Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening. This is a quick thing. I'm glad to have seen, you know, doing some work with the charge point there to get, for electric vehicles. The only thing I would say, because I've been looking at electric vehicles on YouTube and all, a couple of things that if you want them to use the charge point, to use the location is, it should be accessible. The other, the other thing is, well, I mean, by accessible, I mean easy off of the main road and on. The other thing that a lot of people complain about these charging locations is that it's better to have it as a, sort of like a drive-through, not like where you pull in and you have to back out. Because some of the vehicles are, they locate, you know, the charging port is in the front, Teslas are all in the back. So depending on what vehicle you have, it's a little hard getting out of the situation. The other thing is, you have to put it, even though it's more of a pain, it's better to be away from, like, an easy access to the building. Because what I've seen a lot on YouTube and all is that when they put them in malls, they put them close to the building, people with combustion vehicles park in there. And then when the people with electric vehicles come in to charge, they can't use it because the other vehicle's taking up the space. So just as a point of reference, you know, when you look, doing, I don't know if you pick, you know, if the town picked the location or a charge point, you know, picked the location.
The location is going to be in the, I want to save this, isn't it correct to say it's the canal parking lot, Mr. Simone? What do we call that parking lot?
It's Morris Canal.
Morris, so the Morris Canal parking lot.
Yeah.
That's where the location is going to be. I don't think it's a drive-through type of situation, it's going to be one that's going to be stationary, and you're going to pull up and you're going to put the charger in your car.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, like, a lot of them, you know, saying like, if you take like, let's say, two parking spaces that were back-to-back and put it in between, so they could access it either way or, you know, drive-through.
Well, Mayor, can you look into those comments that's brought for us tonight about this charging situation and see what we can accommodate?
Now, was the location picked by charge point, or was it a town choice?
Councilmember Seaver, you said you have something? Mayor?
We presented an application to the renter who approved the application. So it was selected by the municipal, there's some, some way, so they previously expected the location, the approval came with the location that was previously.
Oh, okay. All right, just a point of reference for you, some more information.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Seaver, now?
So, just a quick question, maybe this is something perhaps that we should look at prohibiting other cars, other than electric cars, from parking to this spot, on these spots, correct?
As far as the reply, I don't have any.
Okay.
The floor is open, sir.
Andrew Baggett again. Last meeting, I brought up about possibly moving this podium forward or adjusting the camera, so we could get this person on. I know sometimes if the engineer's here, and we don't want to cut out Mr. Simone, I'm sure, but maybe we could work on that again?
We'll discuss, I'll discuss that with the council members and the mayor.
Thank you.
We're not going nowhere, so you take your time.
Mary Ann Baggett, 78 Franklin Road, Denville. I just wanted to talk about two things very quickly. My husband had brought up that it was very dark in the back behind the gas station on Main and Stevens, and the Chinese place, it was pitch black, and there was a light out, what we called PSE and G, and the same day, they were there and they got the light going. So maybe I have more clout than you'd think, but we got that taken care of, so that's a good thing. And it, you know, it was really dark, and being that the gas station's vacant, and you can just hop from the back of that building right on our building, so I feel better about that. But I also wanted to bring up that I used to decorate for parties, and I had done an April and Paris theme. I made a big, two panels at a foam board that was a family in Paris that were shopping, and they had bags that said Cartier and whatever French designers on the shopping bags. There was an Eiffel Tower in the background, and it was a mom, a dad, a teenage girl, and a little boy, and little boy's pointing. Anyway, for the AB, one of the ABC events, which was, they had a little, like, street fair sort of thing, but it went down on the canal walk, I cut away the Eiffel Tower, and I put a sign that said Stevens and Main, I made the shopping bags say some of the businesses, and turned it from Paris to Little Falls. And it's, it's foam board, and the faces are cut out, so it's like a photo opportunity type of thing, where you get back there with three other people, stick your head through the hole, and take a picture. And I've had this now, it's behind my tenant's store at 105, taking up room for probably 12 years or something like that, and it's up for grabs. I don't want to throw it away. It's, it's pretty cute, it's a pretty decent condition, figuring it went through a party and a street fair already. But being there's so many events going on here, it's a Little Falls-themed thing. It's one of the bags, I think somebody's wearing a little button that says the Business Association, and so, you know, with all, I don't know about the raffles or where these are being held, but I just want to give it away. And I was in touch with ABC, and they said, Renee was like, well, I don't know where I'm going to put two four-by-eight-foot panels, so she said maybe the schools. So I'm going to check with the schools, and, you know, they might want to use it on the stage or for something like that. However, I'm afraid I might hear the same thing, what are we going to do with it? Well, if it gets used one more time and then you throw it away, I'll feel good that it got used one more time. And so just keep it in the back of your head. I mean, I can, I have a photograph of one panel, and it's got my nephew and his wife's face in the hole, but you could get an idea what the other two panels look like. So just keep it in mind, and as long as it's not a rainy or windy day, I'd be happy to offer it up. I see you two making.
We appreciate your offer, and I'm sure we would be able to utilize it, but however, you did mention that the schools sort of have first dibs on it, so you can, so why don't, if that doesn't pan out, please reach out to Mr. Crucia.
All right.
And then we will, I, we definitely have some, I think, I think council members and the mayor have some good use for it. Councilmember Quadi, do you want to say something?
I was going to suggest, because the Fall Festival and the block party are run by the Little Falls Business Association, which is run by Karen Winnick.
Yes.
Who is at Pencil Works, which is right across the street from you. You know, reach out to her. And if, you know, they have an artistic alley as well, so if they are interested in it, I think that they would be perfectly there to hang on to.
Okay, and like I said, if it just, if they just have to keep it somewhere, use it once, and then they all have nowhere to, well, then they'll throw it out, but I have a feeling that Mr. Simone's going to get.
Councilmember Seaver, you have something you want to comment on this?
No, I have a similar comment that maybe perhaps Karen Winnick would be a great resource.
Okay.
And even perhaps Mr. John Pace at our recreation center.
That, that's true.
So, he works at a lot of good events and other events.
Right, and they might have a back room or something. It's a lightweight, they're very lightweight, it's just they're four, I'm going to say four by seven, two panels, so. All right, Karen Winnick, Mr. Pace, but we'll see what the schools say first. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Quadi? This is getting a lot of talk, go ahead.
You can also check with the library, because they do Storytime usually on Monday nights with the kids, so they may get a kick out of it. You know, Mr. Pace at the rec center has the Halloween party coming up next month. He also does the Easter egg hunt as well, so there's different times there.
Okay, I didn't think of the rec center, but.
Yeah, so you've got a lot of different options.
All right, and they have a little room. I know sometimes the schools are like, oh, no, what do we get?
The library does a lot, too, where they're constantly bringing in families for movie nights to Storytime, different mixers here and there, so the kids can take photos, there's Lego days, everything else.
All right, I'll check with all those people. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come up? Okay. It's a good thing that Mrs. Scobie's not coming up, because then it would really be an issue, right? Though Mr. Fernandez would be difficult. Seeing no one else come forward, cabinet, Mr. Fernandez.
Why are you bringing Louis Fernandez, 54 Harrison, why are you making a joke on me?
I'm not making a joke, sir.
Yes, you are.
I'm not making a joke.
You know, you got offended when I said supposedly anybody with a little bit of brain, and you got insulted.
It's not a joke, if people laugh, it's not my.
I got insulted when you mentioned my name. So what, you don't care as well? Is that what it is?
If that's what you feel, sir.
No, you just went like this.
If that's what you feel. If that's what you feel.
Some council president you are.
Thank you for the comment. Seeing no one else come forward, have a motion to close the meeting?
Second.
I'm sorry, close the public comment.
Second.
Second.